Greetings. I am John Althoff, President and Chief Mission Officer of the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce, and welcome to the Farmington City Council Candidate Forum. Thank you to the candidates, each one of you, for attending tonight. We'd also like to thank the City of Farmington for allowing us to use the wonderful facilities and their willingness to record and broadcast this event. The Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce is a 66-year-old organization, Chamber Organization that serves nine cities, including Farmington, and three townships while representing about 50% of the population of Dakota County. The DCR prides itself in driving business and communities forward through the power to connect. We are the voice of business and work to develop vibrant communities through programming like this candidate forum. Sponsorship of the forum is a public service, providing you with the opportunity to hear the candidates discuss important issues face-to-face. Views expressed here are of the candidates and not necessarily those of your DCR Regional Chamber of Commerce. Sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the Chamber of any particular candidate. DCR Chamber does not endorse candidates. And before we go further, I just want to thank Wendy and Scott, our timers for this evening as well, for their service. Because that's important, because we're going to start the candidate forum with opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statements and two minutes for their closing statements. Opening statements will be in alphabetical order, beginning with Candidate Cordis, then proceeding to Candidate Gore, then Candidate Wiles, and Candidate Wilson. Closing statements will be in reverse alphabetical order. The order of answering questions will be rotated. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to questions, and we ask the candidates, as hard as it may be, to respect those time limits. Our timekeepers have the yellow 15-second sign, alerting you that you have 15 seconds left to complete your response. There's also a red sign. We all know what that means. It means that your time is over, you need to conclude your sentence, so we can move on to the next candidate. The questions for this evening were submitted to the Chamber by email. They were reviewed by Committee of DCR, Public Affairs Committee members, and edited for clarity, and some were combined. In addition, this committee developed some questions based on topics of interest they identified within the community. Because of time constraints, we weren't able to ask all the questions that were submitted. The forum will conclude in about an hour. So let's begin with opening statements. It'll go Candidate Cordis, Candidate Gore, Candidate Wiles, Candidate Wilson. So let's start with Candidate Cordis.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank the Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce and John Althoff for hosting this forum tonight. These forums are an invaluable resource for helping our community get to know the candidates running for local office. Additionally, I want to thank those who are watching this recording at home. Thank you for your commitment to learning more about the candidates running to be your city council members. My name is Jake Cordis. My wife Bridgette and I are proud to call Farmington home. Just over a month ago, we welcomed our son Oliver into the world, and I couldn't be happier to raise him here in my hometown. Thank you, Bridgette, for sharing my passion for community and supporting this endeavor to represent Farmington. Professionally, I've spent the last three and a half years working in business development for Finch and Daisy Consulting, a nationwide consultant firm based right here in Farmington. Working with our leadership team, we've grown Finch and Daisy into a national brand, serving clients in real estate accounting and technology consulting. Personally, I've dedicated the last 12 years of my life to serving our community. For eight of those years, I had the honor of serving on the Farmington Area School Board, where I gained extensive knowledge of local government, responsible policymaking, budgeting, transparent communication, and collaborating with others. In addition to my time on the school board, I've helped lead various civic organizations, including the Farmington Area Education Foundation, the Due Days Planning Committee, and most recently, as president of the Tiger Fan Club. I'm also a proud member of the Farmington Rotary. It's been an honor to serve our community in different capacities, and I hope to continue that service as a member of the city council. I'm running for the city council to focus on fiscal responsibility, the growth and development of our business community, and building strong community partnerships. We in Farmington are at a critical juncture. I believe that by focusing on these areas, we can secure a bright future for our town. But if you ask me why, it's right here: my son Oliver. I hope in 18 years, he will choose to stay here, just as I did, and his grandparents and great-grandparents before him. Farmington can be a place where Oliver and all others can be proud to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
Good evening. My name is Josh Gore. Two years ago, my wife and I moved to Farmington, into a neighborhood on the east side of town. We've really enjoyed it, loved the neighborhood. Part of the reason that I feel I wanted to do this is to help the community. I feel like there are some issues that have arisen, that have caused some division in the community. And part of being elected is to serve the people that elect you and to do the things that they feel they need and want. And I know, in my neighborhood anyways, there are a whole lot of people that don't feel that is happening. And so my biggest reason for doing this is my family and making sure that my daughter can grow up somewhere she can be proud of and to hopefully give people an option for a fresh face, fresh insight, and somebody who's more than willing to listen, because I do feel that is the most important part of government. If you're going to be an elected official, you're being elected to serve the people that elected you. So I just want people to know that there are people out there that still want to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Gore. Candidate Wiles.
Thank you, Mr. Althoff, for having us out here this evening. My name is Justin Wiles. I have been a member of this community for the last eight years, since I've built my home over in the Executive Estates area. I have been a part of this community for my entire life. My grandfather moved here back in 1985 and is still residing here in that same residence. I've been a part of this community, attending local events like the Dakota County Fair, Mountain Dew Days when I was real little. And I'm glad that the community here is still thriving, and I'm glad to be a part of it. I'm running for the city council here, so that people out there can be heard. I also believe that government is being part of serving the community that you were elected into, and I hope that I can fulfill that as I move forward here. And I hope we all can learn a lot from this forum, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate Wiles. Candidate Wilson.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here again. My name is Steve Wilson. Lived in the community, Farmington, for just over 20 years now. We've had our three children graduate from Farmington High School, most recently Elizabeth, this past year. I love this community, and I love serving this community. I wouldn't be running again if it was not for my love of the community and love what we're doing here. The compensation to be on the city council is about $500 a month. And one thing that I've always prided myself on during my term is showing up and being there. Being on the city council and showing up to the Monday meetings every other week is really about 10% to 20% of the activities that we do. I go to fire department open houses, go to the pinning and swearing-in of our new firefighters, volunteer firefighters. I show up at the senior center and engage with them. I show up at Chamber of Commerce events for ribbon cuttings. And John, you've been visiting Farmington a lot, because we have a lot of exciting stuff here. And I will say that the business community is at a pace that's thriving more so than it probably has in recent memory, and that's going to keep going. You know, as I look out at the next four years, and I think Justin and Josh alluded to this, there's going to be some really critical decisions coming up that are going to impact the future of Farmington. The one component that I think I really bring to the mix is, and I received a comment, I've received this comment a couple times from residents, that I'm not afraid to ask the tough questions, I'm not afraid to really dig into the issues. And that's the type of council member you're going to get with my reelection. Again, thank you for considering my candidacy, and look forward to the rest of our discussion tonight.
Thank you, candidates. Now let's proceed to the questions. Response order for the first question is Candidate Gore, Wiles, Wilson, and Cordis. And the first question is, if you left here to colonize Mars, what strong positive things about the Farmington community would you take with you and try to implement in your new colony?
So like I said, I've only been here for about two years, but one thing that I would definitely want to take with is the sense of community that we have, how much people like being here. Everyone that we've met since we moved here has talked nothing about but how great Farmington can be and has been, and hopefully will continue to be. Another thing is, just, yeah, man, truthfully, mainly that, just how proud we are of where we live.
Thank you. Candidate Wiles.
Well, this is definitely out of left field, but I like these kind of questions. These are good. If I were to colonize Mars, I definitely would bring, I'd definitely bring the small-town feel with it. People that come together, that are willing to help each other out, that definitely can get along and become friends very easily, because without that community, you really don't have anything that survives, especially in that climate. But I just hope that, you know, that's one of the big things. And if I had to take one other thing, it's definitely the steakhouse that's coming too.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Wilson.
You know, I'm looking at this question, John. I'm really just trying to figure out who may oppose this question of the council. But no, I think it's been hit on already. It's a weird thing, because, you know, I talk to people, and they're like, well, you guys are suburb, are you a town? You know, what are you? And, you know, even as we approach 25,000 people and, you know, then get on towards 30,000, I still look at Farmington as a town. And the reason I like that and what I would bring in our fictitious journey to Mars is that sense of community. It's hard to define it, but, you know, it's, you know, when something bad happens to one person in the community, maybe a family is suffering, the whole community rallies. You know, when our sports teams are doing well, when our, you know, athletic teams, our, you know, fine arts teams from the high school are doing well, we all show up. And it is really quite an amazing thing how much we, as a community, show up to support one another in good times and bad, and that is remarkable. I, it would be, I'd be very surprised to see another community like that, and I'd love to bring that characteristic wherever I go.
Thank you. Candidate Cordis.
John, this is a great question. Like, it's been said, it's on left field, and I love it for the first question tonight. It's hard to go forth answering this one, because I think I agree with what everybody has said. But to reiterate, I think the biggest thing that I would bring with is that sense of community. You know, in Farmington, somebody told me this recently, but we don't let each other fail. Whether it's businesses, whether it's your neighbor, we step up to the plate and we help each other out. You saw it with Wang's when they were going through difficulties during COVID, and people stepped up, and we raised money to keep them open. You see it on a daily basis. If your neighbor needs help mowing the lawn or raking leaves, or, you know, this winter, hopefully it doesn't snow that much, but if it does, you know, we're going to see our neighbors out helping each other, plow each other's driveways. So I think that sense of community, that sense of helping each other out is really what makes Farmington special and what I'd bring with me to Mars.
Sounds like Mars is going to be colonized very well, if the Farmington contingency has anything to do with it. Response order for the second question is Wiles, Wilson, Cordis, and Gore. And the second question is, as council member, where do or would you go for input before making any major decision? Candidate Wiles.
I believe this question was also asked during the mayoral forum, and it's a great question. And there's definitely people in place, in certain areas, that do offer great insight and knowledge. One of them is being in this building here during normal operations. There's a lot of people that work in and out of here that have great insight. The second place, then, is the people in the community, your neighbors, the guy at the grocery store, at the gas station, whoever you got, ask them questions, learn about things. Because the people that are on the ground are the ones that see most of it, and those guys have the eyesight for that kind of thing. So that's where I'm going with that one.
Thank you. Candidate Wilson.
Yeah, I mean, this definitely goes to the core of serving the community. You know, I think it was pointed out earlier that, you know, the city council is the very closest representative body to the people. So, you know, you talk about we, the people, and the founding of our country. You know, the people are out there, and they absolutely have to be part of my decision-making. And on any key decision, I'm going to hear, and there's one really hot-button issue out there, and I've heard both sides and both perspectives. So I'm absolutely going to be looking to the residents, I'm going to be looking to the business community, I'm going to be looking to, you know, the Chamber, Rotary, and others to gather their insight, because any major decision is going to impact all those. I'm also going to turn to our staff at City Hall. So if a decision is coming to us, presumably, that has been developed by the staff. And so I'm going to be talking with Lynn about that. I mean, Lynn is the quarterback of the organization. She's the only person that the city has the ability to hire. So we trust her to lead the city. But with any major decision, it's going to be talking with the people, and it's going to be communicating, collaborating with our city staff.
Thank you. Candidate Cordis.
Yeah, I think three groups come to mind when I think about this question. The first, obviously, has been mentioned already, is the residents. I'll seek feedback from residents from the breadth of our community, north, south, east, and west. And like Steve mentioned, the business community as well, because these people are living and breathing our decisions on a day-to-day basis. So I think that's the most important group of people that we need to discuss major issues with. The next group that I see is my peers. You know, as a potential new member to the city council, I'm going to look at people like Candidate Wilson, who's been here for a while and has some of that institutional memory to share about things they've gone through in the past, things that have worked and things that may not have worked in the past. And then finally, excuse me, the last group of people I would talk to, as was already mentioned, is the administration here working at City Hall, but also the individual contributors that work for the city of Farmington. I think it's important to talk to, you know, whether it's public works, finance, Parks and Rec. Talk to the directors, but also talk to those people who are out and about in the community, working every day, to make sure I develop a full breadth of what's going on. So the three groups would be the residents, my peers on the council, boards and commissions, and then the administrative staff here at the city.
Candidate Gore.
Yeah, so this question's basically been answered, for the most part. But yeah, it's the people of the town, the business owners, absolutely the staff and people here, and then past city council members, people that have done it before and kind of have an idea of what's going on. But most importantly, I would say, is the business owners and the people of the town.
Thank you. Response order for the third question is Wilson, Cordis, Gore, and Wiles. And the third question is, District 192 Superintendent reports that 25 languages are spoken at Farmington High School. As Farmington grows and becomes more diverse, how do you plan to integrate people with different backgrounds into the Farmington community? Let me clear, this is in Farmington, not in Mars. Okay, not on Mars.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, John. Yeah, there's no doubt that Farmington is becoming a more diverse community, and I think that's exciting. You know, this, a flavor of this question came up when we were talking about, you know, do we honor Juneteenth and have a Juneteenth celebration before it became a national holiday? You know, as I look at this question, I do worry to a certain degree. You know, if you do certain actions, is that going to, you know, potentially have, you know, a consequence that you're not looking for? I think as a city council, you want to make sure that the opportunity is extended to everyone in the community to be engaged and participate. I remember talking to a number of residents of different ethnicities the summer of Due Days, and I introduced myself and, you know, had a great conversation. And they're like, you know, how do we get more involved? And I said, well, you can show up at city council meetings, you can apply for a board or commission, you can, you know, serve in the city council. And so I want to make sure, you know, I think being a welcoming community that embraces diversity and different thoughts and ideas really starts at the council by being respectful and welcoming, and having that be part of our vision and mission as a city, to welcome everybody with a diverse perspective into our community. And I think you accomplish those, and then everyone does feel welcome.
Thank you. Candidate Cordis.
Yeah, I think this is very important. You know, we've all hit on it already tonight, that Farmington is a welcoming community, and we need to continue to remain a welcoming community. I think one of the first things that I would do, and this goes to one of the reasons why I'm running, is to build those community partnerships. Let's talk to the school district. Obviously, they're living and breathing this on a daily basis. Let's talk to them and learn what they did well, learn where maybe there were opportunities, and we could correct those opportunities and do things a little bit better to ensure that these diverse populations do feel welcome in our community. I think the next thing that we would do is look at where these individuals might be interacting with the city. Steve alluded to, you know, us being present in the community as council members. But I think also looking at, you know, maybe it's Parks and Rec is their first interaction with the community, making sure that our Parks and Rec Department is offering programs that meet them where they are. And I think the other area we need to look at is here at City Hall. If somebody's coming here and English isn't their first language, are they going to be able to conduct their business with people at City Hall? Are people here going to be able to translate for them? Or are they going to have software that might be able to do that translating for them? So I think offering all of those capabilities will really continue that welcoming feeling in Farmington and let these diverse populations feel at home.
Thank you. Candidate Gore.
I would say, as kind of alluded to by the other candidates, the biggest thing is just making sure that everybody understands that they are welcome and that they're not excluded. I know we had a smelly couple in our neighborhood that my daughter played with their sons in the park, and when my mom was bringing my daughter home for the night and they were going home, the mother stopped my mom and thanked her for letting my daughter play with her kids. And my mom's like, well, I don't understand, like, you're very welcome, but, and she goes, there's not a lot of people that let their kids play with my kids at the different parks we've been to and the different places we've lived. And so that's a huge thing, is just making them feel welcome, making them not understand that they don't need to be afraid to come down here and look for help, and that, as Candidate Cordis alluded to, trying to figure out what we can do to best provide them the help they need, be it translation or anything like that, or going to the school district. And maybe there's a few things they haven't figured out, but have ideas as to, maybe we could do this to help the students integrate a little better and be able to be understood or feel more comfortable. And I think that that's just the most important part, is trying to do our best to make sure they understand that they're safe and welcome here.
Thank you. Candidate Wiles.
Diversity is a great thing, and with diversity also comes a lot of culture. And sometimes I believe culture gets overlooked in certain aspects of life when you meet someone that's, maybe doesn't look like you, because they're from a different part of the world. Being something that you can, that I like to use to integrate is to learn something about where they're from, what they do, what their culture is. Personal example is, I've got a friend whose family is from the island of Trinidad and Tobago. And out there in the Caribbean, they have a big event called Carnival that they celebrate on an annual basis. I had no idea that thing even existed until I met with their family, and I spent a lot of time growing up with them. So to me, making them feel a part of the community is making them know that you understand where they're coming from and that you are aware that their lifestyle may be different, but you're welcome to accept that and that you can use what you know to integrate them and be welcoming to them into your culture, into our culture.
Thank you. So the response order for the fourth question is Cordis, Gore, Wiles, and Wilson. And the fourth question is, Farmington is a community with lots of green space and housing and not a lot of commercial space. Many residents want more place to shop, dine out, et cetera. What can and should the city do, if anything, to encourage businesses to move to Farmington? We start with Candidate Cordis.
Yeah, that's a great question. I think the city council's main job in this is communication and relationship building. Communicating with the owners of the green space, the properties that could be for sale, maybe not for sale right now, but potentially in the future could be for sale. Communication with the local and regional developers, and communication with the business owners, the people who potentially want to locate or relocate their business here. I think it's important, because right now, a lot of the green space that we see as we drive around Farmington is locked up in ag-preserve status, which means it'll take eight years before it actually could be sold to be developed. And I think being proactive in our communication with those landowners will let us future-plan and see when potentially these plots of land will be available for sale, and then communicate that with the developers and the business owners to let them know. Additionally, like I mentioned, building those relationships, understanding from the property owners what their legacy might be, what they're looking at when they're looking at getting out of the farming business or the land-owning business, and building the relationships with the business owners and making that bridge between property owners and business owners.
Candidate Gore.
I think the biggest thing is just, as Candidate Cordis said, is trying to find people that want to bring business into Farmington and what they want to bring, and figuring out where, like, logical places to put said businesses would be, figuring out what green spaces are available, when they'll be available, how willing people are to sell them, because farmers are very proud people, and some of them want that to be their family's legacy. So it may not be land that's available, but just making sure that opportunities continue to be available when you can make them. So I'm just trying to bring in as many businesses as possible.
Candidate Wiles.
Well, this is kind of an area that I do not have much knowledge in personally. But if I did, I believe that a lot of what I would consider would, has already been mentioned by the other candidates to my right here as well, being on top of what's available, what's becoming available, keeping communication with those potentials, whether they be a business owner, a land developer, whatever you name it. But part of that is keeping in touch, making sure that the people that are on one end are aware of the people that are on the other end, and that as the government body, that we become the bridge between the two, and we can facilitate any of those actions that may be necessary.
Candidate Wilson.
Yeah, I really appreciate this question. And actually, the most important sentence or word in this is space, and I think Jake alluded to this. You know, as residents drive around the community, and of course, you know, the continuous joke is, or is the grocery store. But the reality is, a massive amount of land in Farmington is tied up in either ag-preserve, which is correct, it's about eight years to take out after the landowner petitions, or is just farming that residents or that those farmers are choosing not to sell their land. You know, there's a part of me that says, gosh, you know, I just love the heritage of our community and the farming part of it, because once it's gone, we're not going to get it back. So it's going to be replaced by homes, businesses, what have you, and that will happen in time. But again, there isn't a lot of space to work with. I will say, though, that R&amp;L Trucking, which is a major trucking, national trucking industry, you know, is expanding 100,000 square feet just north and east of Pile and Ab Road, which is huge. And what can the city do? The city, in the last couple of years, the council's really prioritized this. And we have an economic development team that is going out there, doing amazing things. And the fruits of their labor are paying off, and I'm excited to see what's coming down the road.
Okay, thank you. All right, the response order for the fifth question is Candidate Gore, Wiles, Wilson, and Cordis. And the fifth question is, what is your position on the growth and pace of growth in the city of Farmington? Should it be increased or slowed down? And explain your answer. So again, let's start with Candidate Gore.
As far as the pace, I think it's moving kind of as fast as it can, for the most part. I feel like... I feel like, as candidate Wilson said, there's probably not a ton of available space right now to bring in a lot of, like, brand-new stuff. Like, a lot of people have said a grocery store would be nice, but you got to work around what you have and what's available. But I don't necessarily think that you want to slow down progress, but it's whether or not you have the ability to increase it at this current time. And that's the big thing you look at and research and figure out if, where you can and can't bring in new businesses, or if people are moving out and repurposing what they have at the moment.
Candidate Wiles.
The pace of growth can actually be separated into two separate halves, one being residential. Residential growth has been absolutely fantastic the last several years in this area, all the way back to 2016, when I built my residence in the Executive Estates area. There was several homes that were being built at that same time. It was a busy neighborhood. I've watched all of the new residential up on Pilot Knob come in the last few years. That place has gone absolutely crazy, and it's wonderful to see all the new people coming in and being a part of and joining our community. The business side of growth is a little slow, I believe. I don't see much new coming in. I wish there was new coming in. The Magic Grocery Store, we like to talk about a lot around here, being one of those that we kind of joke with. But the business, what we have is wonderful. I do wish we had a little bit more, more variety of things that we could participate in as residents in this community. But overall, Farmington's been a great place, and I'm happy with the way we're going.
Candidate Wilson.
Yeah, I would say, you know, Josh gave a perspective that I agree with. The pace of housing, but I would also add the type and mix and diversity of housing, has, I think, been a real big success of Farmington over the last two to three years. You know, you look at the corner of, you know, Third and Elm, you know, kind of the biggest eyesore in the community has turned into a really attractive market-rate apartment called the Emery. We have active adult 55-plus community, Vita Ativa that's out there. We have a new apartment complex, again, market-rate apartments that are coming in, townhomes along with single-family homes. And that is all going to actually drive business, and that is why, you know, unfortunately, we don't get all the nitty-gritty details from our economic development team, but there is a lot of activity going on in the business area. Yes, you know, I wish I had a vending machine and could, you know, could press A1 and out pops a restaurant, and A2 pops out a grocery store. I mean, we'd all love that. But the reality is, with both housing and with commercial development, the market rules. So the market is going to dictate, but what we can do as a council, and we can do as a city, is advocate, build relationships, and set the table for success.
Candidate Cordis.
Yeah, I think it's very important to look at this in two halves, like candidate Wiles had mentioned. I'll touch on the business side of things first. I would love to see that increase, the pace of that increase. I think, alluding to our previous answers on the last question, maintaining those relationships with not only green space property owners, but owners of properties that are potentially, have the potential to be redeveloped. So having a new business come in and take over an old property and spruce it up, and put in a new business, new to our town, is important. So I think maintaining those relationships, maintaining that communication, and promoting those opportunities is very important. On the residential side of things, maintain or increase the level of growth is important. Like Steve said, we've got, finally have developments, diverse developments throughout the town, multifamily, townhomes, senior living communities, that will really meet our residents where they need to be. Whether you're a first-time homebuyer, you're looking, maybe not to buy a home, but to rent, or you're looking to downsize because your kids have hopefully stayed in Farmington, but have moved out of your home and are living on their own, but now you and your spouse need something a little smaller in a senior development. I think maintaining that diversity and that pace of residential growth is critical as well.
The response order for the sixth question is candidate Wiles, Wilson, Cordis, and Gore. And the sixth question is, it's a long one, sorry about that. What specific experiences do you have, and what initiatives have you undertaken to prepare you for the responsibilities of serving for the city council, and specifically, how do you believe these equipped you to address the needs of the Farmington community? For candidate Wilson, who's already served on the city council, what is your greatest learning while you served on the Farmington city council that will aid you going forward?
This is a loaded question.
The first person is candidate Wiles.
Sorry, Mr. Althoff, I spoke out there. This is a loaded question. It's a lot to take in. Experiences that I have and I've undertaken. I've spent most of my working world in the automotive industry. I've been part of several facets of dealerships with, dealing with guests that come in looking to get vehicle serviced, looking to purchase parts for their own repairs, looking to purchase new or used vehicles. So I have a little bit of experience communicating with people who have different needs in different areas, and trying to communicate with them. One thing that I've learned is that there's a language, as far as working in an industry. I have a lot of car language that I speak that someone who's not fluent with that would understand some of. So you got to be able to learn how to speak the language of, one, faculty government, and then, two, of residential community. So that's the one kind of a piece of experience that I've gained in my, in my life, that I'll be able to help moving forward and kind of address, and hopefully I can make that connection.
All right. I don't know why I was singled out for just one perspective. I feel like I should answer the whole thing. You know, I am going to answer the whole question. I mean, the experiences that I think help shape whether or not you're going to be effective as a council member is really being out there in the community. I mean, you can't hide in your house and kind of, you know, read social media and figure out if that's a good idea, a bad idea. You got to show up, you have to participate, you have to engage. And, you know, the responsibilities of city councils, I pointed out, is to do that. In my line of work, I'm an insurance agent, I have my own business, and I primarily focus on serving our senior community through selling Medicare-related policies. And one thing that that's shown me is how different every consumer is, which is really how residents are too. Everyone is different. And knowing that, and being aware of that, is really, really important. Somebody can look at one issue one way, and another person can look at it entirely different. Neither answer or perspective is wrong or bad, but it's different. The greatest learning, and honestly, this was baptism by fire, I'll see if I can squeeze this in quick. When I served on the city council from 2005 to 2010, the community was super divided over where to cite the high school. Somehow, you have to find diplomacy and collaboration to find a win-win for everyone.
Thank you. Candidate Cordis.
I've already touched on my experience over the last 12 or so years in the school board and on various boards and commissions and civic organizations in our community. But I think the most important thing I've undertaken over the last six or eight months has been attending city council meetings, city council workshops, and EDA meetings. Decisions we make are not made in a vacuum. Issues that come before the council in January have been coming before the council for months ahead of that. And there's important pre-work that needs to be done to have an understanding of what decisions you're making when you start in this office. So I think that's been the most important undertaking that I've done to prepare myself for this specific role. But just like Steve said, showing up is important. When I was on the school board, I dedicated, some might say, too much of my time going to community events, sporting events, musicals, band concerts, choir concerts, you name it, I was there. And I think just ensuring that people can identify community leaders and know that they're approachable. Hey, I saw that guy at the football game. We talked about the offensive line. He's super approachable. I'm going to talk to him about a grocery store. I think that's the most important thing you can do as a community leader, is just be approachable and make sure people know who you are.
Candidate Gore.
Most, I don't have a lot of experience directly with, like, local government or things like that, but my entire career has been spent as a heavy equipment technician, working on pieces of equipment that if they go down, you can literally shut down an entire job site. And understanding that when you're dealing with different groups of people or different businesses, they all have different needs, that, you know, you don't want anybody to be down for too long, you don't want anybody to feel unheard, because at that point, then you're going to start losing business. And if that happens in a community, you can very quickly start losing community members, you can very quickly start losing businesses in your community. So I feel really, one of the most important things is just, like candidate Cordis said, is being there, putting yourself out there, making sure that people know you are approachable, making sure that people know they can talk to you, and making each and every person feel important and understand that their opinion matters, their views matter, their needs matter.
Thank you. The response order for the seventh question is candidate Wilson, candidate Cordis, candidate Gore, and candidate Wiles. And the seventh question is, do you support the rezoning of the Farmington Technology Park data center use? Why or why not?
Well, at least we have a softball question, you know. The comp, the comprehensive plan, you know, if somebody were to ask me, you know, what is something that keeps you up at night? Making sure that our guiding documents, which I believe are the strategic plan of the city, are managed well. A comp plan, for those of you that don't know, every community in the Twin Cities is required to have a comp plan, the Met Council requires it. Every 10 years, you update it. So where am I going with that, and how does it relate to this question? Well, it's central to this question. I have significant concerns about the rezoning. Now, keep in mind, the city council's not seeing this issue as of yet, the planning commission has. I think it's very easy for a community to be kind of sucked in by all the big money and all the big promises that are made. And I know other communities are doing that. But I will say, at least with the information that I've received so far, the rezoning is very concerning to me for a number of reasons, of which I'll expand on when we get to that point. And so at this point, I would not support that rezoning.
Candidate Cordis.
Yeah, like Steve, I do have some questions still that are outstanding, but at this point, I do support the proposed rezoning. I believe this project does bring much-needed economic development into our community. And personally, I'm of the opinion that it's not the job of government to get in between a land seller and a land buyer. So those are some of the reasons that I would personally support this. But like I said, I do have some concerns that are out there. Hopefully, that those concerns are addressed in the alternative urban area-wide review, the study that will be coming out in the next few weeks. And should those concerns be addressed in a matter I find sufficient, then I would be in favor of this moving forward.
Candidate Gore.
I would say, as far as the rezoning, no, I'm not for it. I feel, to an extent, from the experience I've had with it, being at several meetings and stuff like that, it's, the way it's been gone about just seems odd. I mean, you have an entire group of hundreds of people begging for this to not be done, and outright feeling like they're just not being listened to, period. And I have talked to a lot of them, because ironically, it's my neighborhood as well. And I have no problem with business, I have no problem with advancement, I have no problem with data centers, if they're built in the proper locations. But as far as the rezoning of this, I, there's too many unanswered questions. There's too many things that people don't seem to be able to tell anybody else. And some of them are answers that, as candidate Cordis says, will come out with the information that'll come out in the coming weeks. But other stuff is things that you should have a general idea of, that you could put out there as, hey, this is, you know, what we view happening, and this is, and nobody seems to be able to give those answers.
Candidate Wiles.
Well, here's the hot topic for the night. As I've mentioned before, I'm in the Executive Estates neighborhood, so this particular topic does hit quite close to home for me. At this juncture, there is a lot that goes on to a project this large. Mr. Wilson mentioned the comp plan. You mentioned the AURA, I believe is the acronym. A U A R, yeah, I could never get that right. Yeah. So there's definitely a lot that goes into it, and I've been kind of tuned in the last several months on looking into this as it kind of grows and comes about. But at the current juncture, with the information that I have and the understanding that I have, I would not support this particular rezoning, because it would take away one of my favorite golf courses.
Okay. The response order for the eighth question is candidate Cordis, candidate Gore, candidate Wiles, and candidate Wilson. And the eighth question is, education is important, is considered by many, is critical to city growth and development, but manageable tax levels are also important. Do you support the upcoming District 192 bonding vote? Why or why not?
That's a great question. I do. In short, my answer is yes, I do. I have mentioned before, I served for eight years on the Farmington School Board. I know and I trust the administrators in Farmington. I know and I trust the current school board members. If they say there's a need out there, and I personally, with my history, know there's a need out there, there's a need out there. And unfortunately, one of the driving reasons for that need is unfunded and underfunded mandates that came handed down from the state of Minnesota and the federal government. And unfortunately, not just in Farmington, but across the entire state, those mandates are being forced upon the taxpayers to bear the burden. And this is just the result of those unfunded mandates. So yes, I do support it. The good news is, in the next two to six years, there's going to be a lot of existing debt that falls off. So yes, we'll see a little bit of a tax increase right now, but due to the debt being paid off for the explosive building that we did about 20 years ago, we'll actually end up seeing a decrease of taxes between the next two and six years.
Candidate Gore.
I would say yes. I have a daughter that just started kindergarten, and I, hopefully, she will go through her entire academic career here in Farmington. And I want her to have access to all the things she needs access to. I know it gets hard when you start talking about raising property taxes and stuff, but with different programs and stuff like that, you can hopefully find ways to offset it, and make it a little easier on the pocketbooks of people that are, you know, already dealing with high interest rates and things like that, that are already making mortgages and stuff like that high. But yeah, in short, yeah, I absolutely support doing what we can to help the kids and with their education.
Okay. Candidate Wiles.
The short answer is also yes. I have a first grader and another, a three-year-old coming up as well. And being as someone who is a participating taxpayer in this community, I do want my children to have what they need going through the school system that I had when I was growing up, too. So I definitely would support a levy going forward. Mr. Cordis mentioned, there are two coming up. I think one is late next year, and I think the other one is like '28.
Something like that. Something like that.
And that, so that, uh, overall, at the end of it, will go down when those two fall off. So he's correct. There will be relief coming shortly afterwards. So having one calendar year, 12 to 18 months worth of a little extra is something I, I can definitely manage. And I, I would agree that this is something that we need to do.
Okay. Candidate Wilson.
Yes, I absolutely do support the, the, um, the lever, levy referendum that's going to be coming up. Um, I'm kind of on the other end of the spectrum as, uh, uh, for you three gentlemen, I've got, I just spent 18 years, um, with three kids going through the public school system, and they all had a really positive experience with Farmington and our school district. Um, the information about how the money works and, and dollars falling off is correct too. Um, the, the one part that I do want to bring up too, which I think it's lost in a lot of residents, I think there's a lot of distrust in general with schools and, you know, what are they doing behind closed doors and, you know, all this kind of stuff. But yet, we rally as a community with everything that happens in the school, from the robotics team to the band to every sports team, what have you. Um, and I think the part that cannot be overlooked when a community supports this is the health of the overall community is risen. Because residents move here, and it's a really high percentage based on the, the perception or their communication with other people about the quality of the school district. It's one of the biggest reasons people choose to move to a community. Um, so supporting the school district is, I think, important. Um, and I certainly hope it does pass, um, in November.
Thank you. Well, we're almost there. The final and last question, number nine. And the order is candidate Gore, candidate Wiles, candidate Wilson, and candidate Cordis. And the ninth question is the vision question. So decisions that you make and the things that you drive will make an impact not only on the current Farmington, but also on the future Farmington. And so describe what you see Farmington looking like 25 years from now, based on the decisions that you're going to start making now. And we start with candidate Gore.
Um, it's always a hard question. Uh, I, I'd like to hope that there's still a sense of community, but I mean, not to say that it would go away, but I can't imagine Farmington's going to stay a tiny, small town or have a tiny, small town feel forever. I mean, it's already expanding reasonably quickly residentially. Um, but I, yeah, I, I guess my, my biggest thing is I just hope that it's still a happy, safe place for the kids to grow up and, and people to live and that people still want to come here. Um, but it's, it's kind of a difficult question that, I'd say, I don't, I don't have a great answer to.
Candidate Wiles.
Well, 25 years from now is a long time. Um, I hope it, uh, it thrives. I hope the, the way that Farmington's going now continues to do so. Um, we've got a lot of new, new new faces that come into the computer, community. Um, I like to see it grow. I like to keep it seen growing. Um, uh, I hope in that 25 years, we get, we get this magical grocery store we like to talk about a lot. Um, but, uh, it's, it's looking good. I hope it continues to look good. Um, I, who knows? I hope maybe in 25 years, we're looking to build a second high school, you know, do what Lakeville did when they blew up. Now they've got two and who knows, maybe we'll have a second one. And, uh, it looks good. So I'm hoping it stays that way.
Candidate Wilson.
All right. So in 25 years, I'm going to be 80, which feels a teeny bit terrifying. Maybe I shouldn't have volunteered that for the, for the home audience listening to that. Um, but actually, I find that relevant because one of the things I'm most proud of that we accomplished was to completely renovate our, our senior center, which I'm a member of. You can be 50 and over. So if you're 50 and over and you, you're not a member, uh, here's your invitation. Um, but the reason we did that is to, it, it was part of the vision that the community would continue to thrive well into the future. So we're making more open spaces, expanding areas, and really making it a welcoming environment to our active adults and seniors in the community. I envision Farmington to probably be about 12,000 to 15,000 people larger. I think we're going to have, um, at least one grocery store will, will pop up then. We're going to have a, a lot more diversity of housing. We're going to continue to see our parks, parks and trails expand. Um, and I envision that we're still going to see a very much a thriving downtown. We're going to see more industrial happening. And I actually believe, um, you know, it's hard to envision when you're getting bigger, but I, I do envision that we are still going to be a community with that same community spirit that has always defined Farmington. I just think it's going to be really tough for that to go away, and I look forward to it.
Candidate Cordis.
You know, we started out the evening with a really fun question, and we're going to close the evening with a really fun question. Unfortunately, John, I forgot my crystal ball at home, so I can't give you an exact answer, but I can tell you what I hope. You know, a lot of people talk about, we want Farmington to be the next Lakeville. We want Farmington to be the next Apple Valley. We want Farmington to be the next Rosemont. I think we all want Farmington to, to be Farmington, continue to be successful, to continue to grow, hopefully someday get that grocery store we're all talking about. But I want us to stay Farmington. I want us to be successful. And I want to maintain that hometown feel that we've all talked about repeatedly tonight that we're all proud of, you know? And I said it earlier tonight, you know, hopefully in 25 years, my 25-year-old son, at that point, um, will be buying his first house here in Farmington because he's proud of his hometown, just like his dad and the family before me. And, and that's truly what I hope, that we continue to be proud to be Farmington. We continue to thrive. And, yeah, and we have that grocery store.
Right. Uh, thank you, candidates. Uh, only at a DCR candidate forum can you go from Mars to 25 years in the future. So you've, uh, we're good, we're good sports and, uh, and working that on. I appreciate that. So that brings us to our closing statement. So candidates will have two minutes. And the response order is candidate Wilson, candidate Wiles, candidate Gore, and candidate Cordis. Okay?
All right. Well, again, I want to thank, uh, John in the chamber for hosting the event tonight and my fellow, uh, candidates. Um, you know, I signed up to run again because I truly enjoy serving the community. Um, and I value all the relationships that I've built in the community. And I think I serve for the right reasons. I, um, believe I have a common sense approach to how I serve. Um, I show up, I'm there, and I make sure that the voice of the people are heard. Um, you know, we're approaching 25,000 people now, and it's as important today for voices to be heard and collaboration with residents, with staff, with council peers, as it ever was. Um, the work of, of the council is going to become incrementally more complex over time. But I will say, one thing that has been really fun over the past couple of years is to really build a great team. And, and to use an analogy from one of my favorite sports teams, you know, I, I look at the leader that we brought in with Lynn Gorski, you know, who you could almost say is like, you know, a Kevin O'Connell, you know, he's the big picture. He's the head coach of the Vikings. And what Lynn has assembled, similar to, um, our beloved coach of the Vikings, a great team. And that great team has executed on a vision that we have set out. And I'm really excited that, that we have that vision and have created that vision. Um, and we made it really important to prioritize the employees of the city who are going to spend their career here. We're here for just a limited period of time, but they're maybe going to spend their career here. I want to continue serving them, continue serving the residents, and, uh, do it in a common sense way. So thank you very much.
Candidate Wiles.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Altough, for having us out here this evening. Um, this has actually been a kind of a fun panel, um, as a first kind of dip into local government. Um, and I'm glad I'm be a part of it. Uh, I want to thank my wife at home who, uh, kind of encouraged me to come out and take part in this. And I hope, uh, all things go well, regardless of every, however everything goes. Um, I, I'm proud of this community. I like being a part of it. Uh, I like living here. I like enjoying the, I like the, the scenery. I like coming downtown, right out here and, and kind of get that old town feel a little bit. Some of the buildings that have been up here for quite a while. It's, uh, it's a nice feel. I, I like it. I hope that outside of that, our town grows, um, in the right direction. I hope we get, we get better. Um, my boss at work always talks about being a servant leader, and, um, I hope that I can fulfill that role if, if it comes to it. Um, because I like this community. I like being a part of it. Um, and I want to thank the candidates here to my left and to my right. This is, this has been wonderful. I hope, uh, going forward that we all make the right choices and get this community going where it needs to go.
Candidate Gore.
I want to thank everybody involved for having us here. Uh, like Justin said, this has been really fun. Again, a very interesting, uh, look at kind of first dip into, uh, city politics. Um, I also want to thank my wife and my daughter for supporting me and, and pushing me towards this because, um, it's always something I've had a lot of interest in. Uh, but it's also been something that makes me anxious because I, you know, it, it's not in my comfort zone. It's not something that I feel like I'm necessarily naturally good at, um, the public speaking and stuff. But I'm very protective of when I attach myself to a community or to people. I'm very protective of that. And I want everybody to have the things they need. As I said earlier, I feel when you elect city officials, national officials, um, their job is to then make sure that the things they promise you that got you to vote for them are the things that they work for, not to just turn around for personal gain or because, you know, somebody has some big shiny thing that makes them feel like, oh, okay, well, maybe I should do that. Um, it's about the people. Um, it's about making sure Farmington stays as strong as it is now and has been, um, and that the sense of pride. I lived for a while, uh, in a small town in Iowa, Forest City, and it was like, I, I, again, it was a feeling like this, and I, I've loved it. And ever since I moved away from there, it was lost until we moved here two years ago, and I got that back. And, um, it's, it's just been huge to, to feel that sense of pride again for where you live and want to see it do well and want to see the people there thrive and get the things that they need.
Okay. Candidate Cordis.
I'm going to try to keep this short for my closing. I promised my wife I'd be home at a reasonable hour, although I think I timed it right that I missed the 7:30 feeding and diaper change. But, uh, again, I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting tonight's event. You know, I really think it's been an enlightening opportunity to hear from all of the candidates in attendance tonight who'd like to lead Farmington for the next four years. Additionally, I'd like to thank you fine gentlemen, uh, for stepping up and putting your name on the ballot. It really says a lot about all of your character, um, to, to be willing to step into the arena like this. There's a quote that I've long lived by, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. American anthropologist Margaret Mead spoke those words decades ago, and they still ring true today. If I'm elected, I'll be a committed and thoughtful city council member who is dedicated to bettering our community. That's my guarantee to you. I hope my answers tonight helps shed a little light on why I'm running and what I hope to do if I get elected. If there are any questions out there, please, uh, look me up on Facebook and, and get ahold of me, and I'd love to have a, a further conversation. I truly appreciate your support, and, uh, in this election, I really want to make Farmington a place we can all be proud, continue to be proud to call home.
The Dakota County Regional Chamber of Commerce would like to thank everyone for participating in our forum, the city of Farmington for their services and their, this wonderful public space they share with us. We especially want to thank our, um, candidates, uh, for being a part of the democratic process by running for office, even when it's not comfortable. Um, and for being willing to serve the community and to speak with us today. And again, Wendy and Scott are timers who I think kept everything on pretty much on track, right? They didn't have to come up and, and, uh, move anybody along at all, which was great. Uh, the DCR Chamber is a regional chamber with a power to connect. We strive to drive business and communities with, that we serve forward. If you're interested in finding out more about the, uh, what we do and how we make a difference, uh, please visit dcrchamber.com. Um, dcrchamber.com will also have recordings posted within a week under candidate forums, and you can, you can watch this, um, and share it with, um, with friends and other people to, to pay attention to. Um, and a reminder that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Please schedule your mammogram appointments or make sure those you, you love do that because early detection saves lives. Last, um, I want to thank everyone in the audience for viewing, um, because part of democracy is paying attention to what's going on and becoming knowledgeable before you vote. And make sure you remember to vote honor before November 5th because it's your civic duty.